All right, good evening. Today is Monday, February 28, 2022. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. Do you have a motion to open the meeting? Laurie, Second Laura, all in favor? All right, great. First item is Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, see the flag. United States of America, and to its people, which is that one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you all for joining us. I have two more board members that I think are coming. This might be a little bit late, but we'll get started. Anyway, we have a couple presentations and a little bit of business. I'll turn it over to Dr. Goodman.
So, good evening. I hope everyone had a wonderful midwinter recess and found time to relax and reconnect. I want you to speak this evening about two current events. Firstly, we offer our support to students and families affected by the unfolding tragic events in Ukraine. We hope for a swift end to the violence. We remain committed to promoting peace and belonging in our school community and extend our heartfelt switches to our Ukrainian school community members. Families in need of support are encouraged to reach out to our counselors and support staff. Additionally, Governor Hokel announced the end of the statewide mask mandate effective March 2nd, this Wednesday. I would like to thank the Board for their support and leadership on this issue. We believe it is important for families to have the choice about masking, and staff also have that choice. On Wednesday, all children will be welcomed and all staff will be welcomed, those who elect to wear masks and those who elect not to. I would like to take this time also to thank our staff, our students, and our families for their patience and flexibility. It's been difficult to keep track of all the changes in regulations, changes in court rulings, and changes in guidance. The community has navigated these challenges as a unified front, committed to student safety and learning. Tocco is in this together. Thank you. And now, the first presentation for tonight is about year-end awards. This evening, Ms. Jessica Perillo, Mr. Philip Treglia, and Dr. Bart Linehan will be presenting on scholarships and academic awards for our district's high school students. They will offer an overview of the types of scholarships, how and when they are awarded, and those involved in making the difficult decisions as to who will be awarded. Some of the organizations that offer scholarships to our hardworking students are community-based, and several are associations outside of the community. They will discuss how they are working to make them more accessible to more students and more diversity. And now, I present to you Ms. Jessica Perillo and Mr. Phil Treglia, our guidance counselors at the high school.
Thank you for having us. So, we're going to talk about two different evenings tonight. We're going to talk about the first evening, which is the academic award ceremony. That's held in the beginning of June, and the second evening is later in June, which Mr. Treglia will speak to, and that is the scholarship evening. During the first one, the academic awards, we have it for grades nine through 12. There's also an academic awards evening that's held for grade eight in the middle school as well. We're going to speak to the high school this evening, though. For Tocco High School, we have the performance awards. Those performance awards are presented in each academic class. Those awards are given out based on the highest GPA in each of those academic areas. Those are also awarded in other classes such as band and chorus as well. In addition to those classes, we also have Tocco High School effort awards. Those are chosen for students with the best effort in each of those classes as well. On rare occasion, two recipients may be awarded for the effort awards. The other academic awards that are given out on those evenings are the book awards. Book awards are based on specific college criteria. In 2021, there were about 12 or 13 book awards given out. These are given out by certain colleges, and there's a committee of guidance counselors and high school teachers that make an effort to give out one per student. So, we do our very best to give it out to and spread it out to as many recipients as possible, given the criteria that those colleges give us. So, on this evening, those are the awards given out, so they're performance, effort, and book awards on the academic evening.
My name is Phil Treglia. I'm glad to assume the role of scholarship coordinator as a new counselor here this year. I've been lucky to work side by side with Mrs. Nicoletto's, our guidance secretary, and Ms. Perillo to ensure we are outreach to as many seniors as possible. We hold our scholarship evening for 12th grade students at the end of June. Our senior four-year awards are presented by academic subject for highest average over four years. Students and families are told about the scholarship process in their college-grade level meetings and evening presentations. In the winter, a blackboard connect of the scholarship bulletin is sent out every year. And last year, we totaled over $61,000 through these scholarships. Our senior scholarship award selection process. There are two different types of scholarships offered. The first being chosen through an external selection process. The graduating class of 2021 was awarded 17 scholarships with 45 recipients. An example of an outside organization would be the Tocco PTA. They awarded six recipients in 2021. We will share more examples on the next slide on the next page. The second here is those chosen through an internal selection process. The committee chosen scholarships is made up of teachers, counselors, and administrators. An example of an internal award would be the community fund, where we had three recipients last year. We make a concerted effort to minimize duplication and work together to share the awards with as many students that meet the criteria. In 2021, there were three students who were recognized for outside scholarships that were Here's an example of our scholarships that we had in 2021. On the left-hand side are our external scholarships, and on the right-hand side, we see we had 27 committee-chosen scholarships. So, some examples of our external scholarships, like I mentioned, the Tocco PTA, Tocco Soccer, Tocco Youth Association Scholarship. On the right-hand side, our committee-chosen scholarships, we had the community fund, as I mentioned, two other examples, New York State Citizenship Award, and the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents. I know that's hard to read, but we have this accessible if anyone would like a copy.
And lastly, we just wanted to share with you that we're always doing our best to try and get as many students as possible to benefit from these opportunities that we have. So, this year in particular, we'd like to try and use our College Cafe as both a time and a place where students can come down and work on these scholarship opportunities. And that might involve us calling some students down and really getting them to come to our office to do so. We're going to continue to work and remind our students and families about these opportunities. That might include announcements and reminders on the students' Chromebooks and blackboard connects and in our college meetings as well. So, we are going to do our very best this year to encourage as many students as possible to take advantage of these scholarships. And that is it for this evening for our scholarships and academic awards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dr. Linehan, can you come join us for any questions or questions?
Hello, everybody?
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to remember.
Yeah. That was a good presentation. I'd like to look a little more at that list. It was kind of quick and it was small.
So, if you can make sure that the Board receives a copy of the presentation, that would be great.
Sure, yes. We'd be happy. Do anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just had one. Thank you for that. It's interesting and helpful to know, I didn't, you know, external versus the outside versus, I guess, ones, can you just clarify on the difference between external versus, I guess, is there an internal then too?
Well, basically, the organization will offer a scholarship, and we'll get it, and it'll be posted. The organization makes the decision if they want to, you know, we may ask to choose and say, no, we want to choose. It's our criteria, it's our organization. So, and it may change, you know, not often, but, you know, the organization will say, well, you guys choose this year. So, the ones that are chosen by the organization basically have a history or have always been chosen by the organization with some slight changes.
Right, right.
The ones that are internal have been historically internal. I mean, it's, you know, some of them predate my coming here, which is a long time ago. So, you know, and some are just awards, there's not money behind them.
Right, okay.
So, you know, the Harry Thompson is a plaque outside, you know, which you've all seen.
Some of just recognition.
So, that's sort of the pattern, you know. So, you know, of the 17 that basically were external organizations, there were 45 recipients last year.
Yeah, that's a lot.
So, and 27 of the internal were 40 recipients. So, we're working to improve, you know, to get more students selected, you know, and the College Cafe should be a big help with that. So, and outreach with Phil on board now, you know, he's been tasked with, you know, looking through the list and calling kids down and, you know, pushing to apply.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, sometimes the applications are a lot of work, sometimes they're not. It depends on what they're looking for. And like, we may have a kid come in tomorrow, or the Electricians Union, or, you know, we want, here's, we post it, you know, you know, and so you never, that list you saw will subtly change for this year, probably. You know, I'd be surprised if it didn't. As a matter of fact, I know it's already changed. So, you know, use you for the better. And sometimes we have funds, you know, we're now tracking funds at the Finance Department, the Business Department, but sometimes they run out of money, you know, and then the scholarship gets dropped off. So, those are some of the criterias and, you know, the ups and downs of what, you know, the scholarship. So, Brian Costa did it for a number of years. He left last January. We had a bit of a void, and Phil is picking it up. So, he's done a great job so far. Keep it going.
Of the internal ones, some of those have money?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And where does the money come from, though? It's not necessarily.
Well, the Carapella, I'll give you an example. Carapella gave us a large grant.
Right.
And, you know, so we gave out scholarships with that. The grant was so large, as you may be aware, that I called a lawyer and said, look, why don't we have kids take SAT and ACT prep so they can get more scholarships from the outside organizations? And so, we used that for the SAT/ACT prep, but also, the original purpose was to award everybody, you know, students on graduation, so.
So, internally means that it's selected internally, not that it's.
The teacher committee, the teachers' work to spread it out, you know. You know, in the committee, you'll hear often, that student already has got an award, let's look for someone else. But, you know, that's a common phrase, you know. Brian would come in and Phil would come in now with a list with the criteria and, you know, the eligible students that can be selected.
Okay.
So, hopefully, the College Cafe, I think, you know, where we want to get better is the outside organizations and push them more.
And with the College Cafe, which, as you know, is new, will be, this year, we're using some of our federal funds, but it will be part of the budget for next year. And that's really to help encourage kids that maybe don't have the, maybe haven't heard about it for some reason, or they may not be a parent, pushing them and looking on, you know, at our announcements to make sure that there's more diversity and that they have a chance at these too. Just remember, some of them have criteria. They start right off with criteria, so that's, sometimes they just.
Grades, community service, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just want to make sure that when these scholarships are awarded, that there is diversity in them, and it's not the same students getting them over and over and over again, and making sure that there's just fairness in that process. And also, that if you're going to bring in particular scholarships, that it's for a particular group of people, that you are more diverse and looking and researching for other outside or external programs or scholarship attached with money, because they need money, that can bring in other groups of students who would meet some of those criteria as well. I want to see that really, really.
We can do a bit of outreach for organizations. We're going to try.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know.
So, to me, it's not a try, it's a do, because it's like a Google search. It's just, you know, tapping into some of the resources in our community. I just want to make sure that it's open. And then, the other thing is if we're going to keep it for just a particular group, then maybe they should, you know, especially if this is the same kids over and over again, great for them, but it might be a good idea that maybe you don't do it in-house if we're not going to diversify that process.
Well, that's, you know, I mean, so, the philosophy here has always been to recognize as many students as possible. So, I wouldn't want to exclude students because they've applied, you know, on a given night. I don't think that would be fair.
But I think the point that I'm making is that we make it so that it's a bigger, bigger groups that do that, so it's not the same kids over and over again, because that's kind of what I've been seeing, you know.
What has happened in the past is, we've had students apply for eight scholarships outside.
That's great.
And receive seven. So, in the Tocco tradition, we've said, well, we're acknowledging students who are, and that's what we've been doing. So, that, you know, I think what we want to do is improve the outreach of students so more kids apply, so more kids are recognized, so it's more diverse.
The Cafe will help in supporting, making sure we have staff or whoever to help those students prepare those, and then again, seeking other organizations that can also.
I agree. Well, the College Cafe should help, you know, Phil's new on board, so I think, you know, we're looking for an opportunity there. And anybody who wants to offer scholarships, who's watching this on TV, I mean, you know, we're here, you know.
I didn't, to Laurie's point, looking at that list quickly of internal ones, it didn't seem to me, first glance, that they were that specific to certain groups. I don't know if I just didn't look at it fast enough, like, we're talking about like certain ethnic groups or certain, they look like they're pretty just doing.
Some are based on courses you take.
Right.
Italian organizations, look for students taking Italian.
Okay, so there was, I didn't.
Yeah, and that's, you know, there was two of those, you know, but there might be more recipients, you know, you know, three students who take Italian, they're recognized.
Right.
That's just an example. It may change this year. Their criteria may change.
And then, some of the, not to say that, you know, we don't have people around the table, but making sure that the people around the table, there's diversity in even the group assembled to select students, you know. I think that's important too, just that we just have representation, we just have a nice diverse community, and I just want to make sure that everyone is, as much as possible, we have representation appropriately.
Sure.
And just to go back to Pete's statement, a lot of the internal ones really aren't, because I'm looking at them right now.
Internal was over here.
Our internal, sorry, I have it backwards.
So, it's just.
Oh, yeah, so we have.
Police, PTAs.
Yeah.
When do you start doing that? So, do you start educating the students?
It's all going, it's coming peak season now.
Okay, so what year, like junior?
In May, you know, Phil will call a meeting with the committee and, you know, lay out the data, what the criteria is, you know, what the scholarships are, and eligible students.
So, this is a senior thing at the moment now, they're getting to know, okay, this is the money, because they know, maybe they're picking their school, so they kind of have a budget in mind.
There's a list on the guidance, for outside organizations, it's updated. Lauren Nicoletto's updates it continuously.
Right.
If I get an email about a scholarship, we'll forward it to Phil, and it'll be updated on the website.
Right. And our students, because I wasn't here, I apologize, but the Cafe, I understand, that's optional, right? So, it's not like a class or a, you know, sort of, I know you're going to reach and say, why don't you come in, or you're sort of going to do your due diligence to reach out, but it's not, it's optional, right, for students to sort of come in?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're not going to do.
No, no, you know what I mean, like, I think that, you know, those are the ones that usually, you know, those are the ones you need, those are the ones that you need to.
We will search and try to find, not limited to that.
Right, exactly.
You know, so just.
Small school, you know.
Free food, you know.
Yeah.
Free lunch, yeah, free dessert, have a Sunday.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, no, I think it'll be, it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, it's progress.
Definitely.
So, it sounds like you certainly think that it's beneficial and correct to keep the external awards as part of our award night.
Well, let me just put, you know, since I've been here, I walked in the door, because we want to celebrate students.
Yeah, no, 100%.
So, that's sort of, if we're going to start changing that, I think, you know, that's a philosophical shift.
Yeah, no, 100%, obviously, we want as many award opportunities.
Yeah, I think we got to improve our.
Yeah, I don't think it's about not including the external people.
Yeah, it's about making.
I guess maybe engaging different groups in the community that we could, where we can.
Go wide enough, wide enough.
I don't think anybody should not be recognized for any achievements they get.
That's been the philosophy since I walked in the door.
Right. Yeah, no, totally. All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Great job.
You're right, Laurie, they should have snacks.
Okay, no, definitely, we know.
Did you have snacks?
Yes. Our next presentation is very exciting. It's the introduction to the reading presentation that I'm doing right now. It's about the Tocco reading program at the William E. Cottle Elementary School, and this is a multifaceted, grounded in science, and responsive to the needs of all our students. In previous presentations, the Board of, at the Board of Education, we recently shared the wonderful work happening with our implementation of the Wilson Foundations. Tonight, we will expand on that. You might even learn a thing or two about building CVC, consonant vowel consonant words, and walk away with a book recommendation. You will see we are joined by our district and building administrators, Principal Mr. John Marash, Director of Curriculum, Mr. Christopher Keough, Director of Student Services, Dr. Kate Sweeney, and Assistant Principal at Cottle, Mr. Pete Kilgallen. We are also very excited to have our teachers here, our elementary teachers, Ms. Cynthia Gorski, Ms. Rebecca Chiafi, Ms. Jill Corderaro, Ms. Elise Kosky, and Ms. Marcela DeCarlo, excuse me. And we are very fortunate to have as part of this presentation two Cottle Cubs, Gianna Tortorella and Madeline Owen. Our speakers will highlight how we shift students from learning to read to reading to learn while providing evidence-based interventions and support. They will also share how we evaluate these programs, implement staff trainings, and focus on the continuous improvement of our instructional strategies. You will see an excellent team at work, united by their desire to share the joy of reading with our youngest learners. It is with great pleasure that I welcome Mr. John Marash, who will be the first of our evening speakers.
If you want to change your seat a little bit and see.
All right, so, good evening, everyone. To reiterate a little bit about what Dr. Goodman just said, tonight is an update on the reading at Cottle School. We will be talking about learning to read and reading to learn, which is part of the science of reading. We will talk about interventions, special education, and program evaluations at Cottle School. So, you all know how to read, but do you remember how you learned to read? For many children, learning to read is a challenging undertaking. That is because reading is not one simple skill, but rather a complex interweaving of several skills that develop concurrently. The Reading Rope, an infographic created by Dr. Hollis Scarborough, captures the essence and complexity of learning to read skillfully. The Reading Rope consists of lower and upper strands. The lower word recognition strands incorporate skills such as phonics, decoding, and sight recognition of familiar words, all skills that work together as the young reader becomes accurate, fluent, and increasingly automatic with repetition and practice. Concurrently, the upper language comprehension strands that incorporate skills like background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, and verbal reasoning reinforce one another as the young reader progresses. Gradually, language comprehension weaves together with word recognition to produce a skilled reader. This graphic illustrates the process very simply by skilled reading, but skilled reading does not happen overnight. It requires equally skilled instruction and practice over time. Ms. Rebecca Chiafi, one of the teachers on our kindergarten team, will now discuss how the science of reading is introduced and developed among our littlest students, and she will be assisted by Ms. Madeline Owen, who is currently a kindergartner at Cottle School.
If you want to go back or forward.
Okay, perfect. All right. If you walk into Cottle, you'll see classroom teachers teaching reading through the use of two different programs, Foundations and Wonders. Foundations focuses on building a foundation for reading and writing. At this stage, the students are learning to read. Foundations is a research-based program that provides students with thorough practice and does everything possible to help them become completely proficient, rather than just cover a standard-based curriculum. Instruction of Concepts uses a multi-sensory approach, which makes the lesson accessible to students on all academic levels. We use skywriting activities to utilize gross motor input, the use of smartboard and magnetic boards for visual input, dry erase boards, dictation journals for tactile and fine motor input. Each lesson builds upon a student's prior knowledge and reviews past concepts. Throughout each lesson, teachers are also able to provide guidance and immediate feedback to their students. This year, our kindergarten team researched many programs that would best complement Foundations. We wanted a research-based program that supported the science of reading, as well as focused on comprehension, vocabulary, and small group guided reading. We explored programs such as Fountas and Pennell, Wit and Wisdom, G.O.D.s, and even piloted Benchmark. As a result of our research and discussions across grade levels, we decided that classes in grades kindergarten, first grade, and second grade would continue to use Reading Wonders this school year, and will be transitioning to Wonders 2023 next school year. In the past, teachers felt that a strong phonics program was missing from our curriculum. Foundations has been our missing link. We believe that this program has helped our students build a strong and secure foundation for reading success. This program focuses on phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, high frequency or trick words, fluency, handwriting, spelling, and punctuation. The lessons are scaffolded by first introducing letter names and sounds using keywords. Next, they're learned through standard sound cards where the picture is removed, and during this time, teachers have flexibility to choose which letters and sounds they will review daily, depending on their individual classroom and student needs. Vowels are introduced one at a time, but they're practiced every single day using the vowel extension poster. We then use the standard sound cards to build CVC words that are real and also ones that are nonsense. At this time, I'm going to have my helper go up. This is Madeline Owen. Do you want to go up to the microphone? She is going to give you a little mini lesson in Foundations. So, what I ask is that she is now the teacher, and you guys will be repeating after what she does. So, Ms. Madeline, these are our large letter keyword sound cards. Madeline's going to say them first, and then, if you can repeat, that would be excellent. Go ahead, Madeline. Do one at a time. Do T-top.
T-top. L-lam-oo. H-hat.
H-hat.
A-apple-a.
A-apple-a. Excellent job. After this, we go into our standard sound cards. These ones are a little bit trickier because they take the picture away. So kids now will remember that slogan, but also utilize them in there. Don't give it away yet. Okay, go ahead, Madeline.
M, man.
M, man.
S, snake.
S, snake.
B, bat.
B, bat. Did you hear it?
No.
Did anyone say buh?
No.
No? What happens if I said B, bat, buh?
It's cream.
You would yell at me. Why, why would you yell at me? Is it buh?
No.
We have to clip it, right?
Yeah.
So it's just buh. Go on to the next one.
Z, zebra.
Z, zebra.
O, octopus.
O, octopus. The next one is our vowel extension poster, and when we do this, when you do this, you have to remember to have a pencil arm. So that means you need to have a straight arm because it gives you a lot of gross motor input. You also need to point with the two fingers because with two fingers, it makes your pull stronger. So Madeline's going to do the first one for us, and if you could repeat again. Go for it.
A, apple.
A, apple.
E, ed.
E, ed.
I, itch.
I, itch.
O, octopus.
O, octopus.
U, up.
U, up. You're doing amazing. The next step is tapping out words. So this is when we tap out CVC words. Can you hold it? Hold on to it, they need to hear you. So when you tap out CVC words, the first letter sound is when you put your two, first two fingers together. The middle sound is your middle finger, and the third sound is your third finger. So Madeline, can you show them how to tap out that first word on the bottom?
N, act.
What is it?
No.
Perfect job. So if you guys want to try with Madeline to do the next one, do the one that starts with the S.
S, at.
Excellent job. And the last one?
N, ex.
Excellent job. The last part of this is practicing our trick words and fluency. So when we do this, we use sentence frames. This helps kids understand how to build a sentence, the importance of capitalization, punctuation, correct spacing between the words. At this point, if I said to you, Madeline, the bug is in the box, how many words are in that sentence?
Six.
Six. What punctuation is at the end?
Period.
Why?
Because it's a telling sentence.
You did already tell this to me. My plan's foiled. We would circle the trick words in here, so in this case, the trick word is the. Each kid also has at their desk a flip book that they would also be finding that same trick word at the same time. What?
It's hard.
It's hard? Because there's so many words now. The other thing we do is we're practicing scooping sentences, which helps with fluency. Usually, when kids start to read, it's kind of robotic, and it would be the, bug is in the box. But if you read it the correct way with scooping, Madeline, can you show them how that would be?
The buh, the bug is in the box.
Beautiful. So by combining all of these components, we've seen a growth in the reading success across all of our grade levels. I want to thank Madeline for all of her help and sharing her reading expertise with us tonight.
See why I love elementary school? Makes me so want to go back in the classroom. She is terrific. Oh, my gosh, wow. Oh, she's just the best. The best.
All right.
We forgot, we got caught up.
Madeline, Madeline, let's give her a little round of applause, Madeline. Madeline, you are a tough act to follow, let me tell you.
Yes, yes.
All right? So, good evening, Dr. Goodman, members of the board, audience members. Third grade at Cottle is the transition year in reading, when students begin their reading instruction with the continuation of Foundations and then gradually overlap into novel studies, an approach that will further develop their interconnection of all the reading strand components. Throughout grades three and five, reading becomes increasingly automatic and increasingly strategic as students read more fluently and with greater comprehension. Ms. Cynthia Gorsy, one of our teachers on the fifth grade team, will now discuss how skilled reading is further developed among our older students, and she will be assisted by Gianna Tortorella, who is currently our, in our fourth grade class. Fifth grade class, sorry.
Definitely a tough act to follow. I see a future teacher. Well, good evening, and thank you for having us. You can go to the, is there a way I click? Oh, there we go?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So we probably have all heard this quote before, the more that you read, the more, I can't even read it from here, you learn, right? And you get to travel the world through books. And so through third and fifth grade, that's your opportunity to have that, right? And so that's why I love teaching fifth grade ELA, because we get to travel the world, and this all comes together. Everything that Madeline did with the decoding, that all comes together in fifth grade, and now these students can use those skills to read novels. We built off the standards in previous basal reading programs like Reading Wonders. We try to choose exciting, engaging texts that reflect our students' experiences and contexts. We embed the reading instruction as well as the writing, and we want to build background knowledge. And some of the ways that we do that in fifth grade are by reading different novels from different time periods, from people that have different experiences. We just finished reading Dark Water Rising, and that takes place in Galveston, Texas in the year 1900, where there was a hurricane, right? The Great Galveston Hurricane. And with that, we get to have background knowledge such as reading and writing about hurricanes before we read those books. We have background knowledge on African fables and folktales, classic literature such as The Lion, Witch, and the Wardrobe, reading about the World War II air raids. So those are just a few examples of just building that background knowledge before actually getting into text. Authentic vocabulary building, a deeper understanding of the text and connection to characters and growth. We have plot and character development through our novel series. We have theme and central idea, communication and dialogue skills, engagement and excitement for learning. Having done novel studies for the last couple of years, I will say I see a huge difference with students and their excitement for just reading. They love to read. They love to know what is going to happen next to that character. And so that's something that I really enjoy in the classroom. So with our novel studies, we are embedding vocabulary, figurative language, grammar, comprehension skills, literal and critical, and our writing. These all correlate and align with the New York State Next Generation Learning Standards as well. In fifth grade, students are taught this with a multi-sensory approach in mind, while students are reading, using their decoding knowledge that they've learned from the past. This is going to help them guide with their reading and then hopefully, right, really facilitating that comprehension, vocabulary, the figurative language, the grammar, and this is all taught through the content. Comprehension, here's just an example of what the back of my room looks like using some graphic organizers. This is something that's done in class when we're reading text, and graphic organizers vary depending on what that text looks like. And students do this in group work, independently sometimes, peer, you know, pairs as well, whole class, this is a whole class graphic organizer in the back, but students did this in groups first. And so that's just an example of some of the ways that we try to facilitate comprehension in the classroom. We want to use prior knowledge, previewing text, identifying the main idea and summarizing, questioning, making inferences, visualizing, using story maps, we retell, and make accurate predictions. So those are just some of the things that we do in the classroom to try to help facilitate that comprehension. And we do that again through direct instruction, think, pair, share, group work, we have short responses, note-taking, graphic organizers, projects, annotating, and the list goes on. So that's really packed with a lot of information, and students actually really do enjoy this, especially when they get to work in groups and listen to their peers orally, give their responses, and it really gets them to really think and become better at critical thinking. Vocabulary and figurative language. So the Mathieu effect states that relationship between vocabulary knowledge and reading comprehension goes both ways. The more you read, the better vocabulary you're going to have. The better vocabulary you have, you're a better reader. And so vocabulary is an integral part to the novel study program that we have. One example, this is an example of a student working on their four squares, where we, I extract vocabulary words from particular, you know, from chapters, and we try to pick words that can go across content like migrate or justly, so words that they would see in other subject areas. Students put a picture, they try to use it in a sentence, they give a synonym, an antonym, they give the definition, and then they're really encouraged, use it in your writing. Try to use one of those vocabulary words tonight in your response. And the students are challenged to do that. This program is actually, the vocabulary program we use is called the Isabel Beck Model. It's a research-based program that really focuses on repetition of vocabulary and teaching it more, you know, in content at all times. When it comes to figurative language, that's something that we continue to work on throughout our years at Cottle. One way that we do that is by using post-it notes. Students can find a figurative piece of language in literature, write it in their post-it, tell me what type of figurative language that is, and then what it actually means. There are also times that students write short responses on what that particular figurative language really means within the text and why the author would have used that phrase. All right, writing. So writing, as you know, we use the writing revolution, where we're teaching basic sentence structure in varied sentences such as sentence expansions, stems, conjunctions, verb tense, number agreement, and sentences are that building block to writing. And within that, we're using grammar. One of the programs that we use is the Easy Grammar fifth grade, but we, that's really embedded within the curriculum at the same time. So we're using that within our writing and putting it into the writing revolution as well. And all of that sentence work is coming from the chapters, and then students will use that. We also have APPs, that's Answer Proof Proof. This really correlates and aligns with the standards of finding a claim and proving it within your text, finding quotes, and students are working on that as well. The fifth grade level, we try to start embedding quotes here and there within our writing and really finding that evidence within the text. That takes a lot of critical thinking and going back and looking for that relevant information. All right. So how does this all come together? Gianna is going to come and share her response to an essay that was given to students at the completion of our Dark Water Rising novel. It's a historical fiction book that takes place during the Galveston Hurricane in the year 1900. The prompt, the prompt was, contrast how Seth's character changed from the beginning of the novel to the end using text evidence.
The book Dark Water Rising by Mary Ann Hale took place in Galveston in the 1900s. Seth was the main character that faced many obstacles, therefore, he goes through many changes. Seth's character changed quite a bit from the beginning to the end of the novel. For instance, in chapter one, Seth was angry about moving to Galveston, but Uncle Nate convinced Papa by saying, the first medical school is right there in Galveston. Papa wants Seth to become a doctor and go to medical school. However, Seth wanted to become a carpenter. As a result, Seth became more bitter towards Papa because he needed his approval to become a carpenter. At the end of the book, Seth became a better carpenter, a more responsible man, and created a better bond with his father. When the storm was over, Papa left to fix the railroad bridge, leaving Seth in charge. Therefore, Seth built a house for Ezra and Josiah without Papa. This gave Seth a chance to prove to Papa that he should be a carpenter. Soon, Seth built a better relationship with Papa because he followed in his father's footsteps. At the end of the book, Papa allowed Seth to start a business with him named Brayden and Son Business Contractors. Clearly, Seth's character changed gradually throughout the novel. By the end of the book, Seth became what he wanted to be all along, a carpenter, but the road was not easy. This story teaches us to never give up on our dreams.
Excellent job. Wow. Her reading is so beautifully fluent and excellent, really showed real understanding for what she was reading. Thank you, sweetheart. Excellent, excellent.
Oh, you're back.
I'm back again. Well, surrounded by superstars, first Madeline and now Gianna. So Gianna, once again, great job. And thank you, Ms. Gorsy, as well.
It's getting late, if any of the kids need to go home. You did a great job.
Clearly, becoming a skilled reader is challenging, and some students struggle with reading more than others. When a child is struggling with reading, Cottle can provide many additional supports that are multi-tiered to address individual needs. A first step might be working with a reading interventionist. This is not simply a little extra help. Instructional reading interventions use a specific plan or step of steps to target an academic need, and each student's progress is monitored and measured at set intervals. Ms. Marcela DeCarlo, our interventionist at Cottle, will now further explain reading interventions in greater detail.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm excited to share with you about the academic supports in reading that we have at Cottle School. The RTI process is a response to intervention in a multi-tiered, data-driven approach to support students and maximize student achievement. The RTI process begins with high-quality instruction from our teachers and universal screening of all children in the general education setting. Students are administered the I-Ready Benchmark Assessment in the fall, the winter, and the spring to track growth and target needs. The I-Ready Benchmark assesses students in the area of phonics, phonemic awareness, high-frequency words, vocabulary, and comprehension. Teachers then use this data to guide their instruction in the classroom and provide high-quality differentiated lessons for students in the Tier One setting. Differentiated instruction assures that all our students have access to the general curriculum, but in a manner that responds to their individual needs. Students who do not make adequate progress in the Tier One setting are provided with interventions at increasing levels of intensity to accelerate their rate of learning and fill the gaps in order to access their grade-level curriculum. Students are considered for Tier Two and Tier Three intervention through analyzing data from their benchmark assessments, as well as classroom formative assessments. The interventions are evidence-based and data-driven and are designed to target specific learning gaps and needs in order to remediate the skill. The interventions are in addition to the core instruction happening inside the classroom, and interventions are provided for a specific duration of time and increase in timing and intensity in order to improve a student's achievement. Our goal is to work towards mastery. We track data and monitor progress, and we use that information to determine the next steps. steps. Based on the students' needs and their grade level, some of the programs that we have been using are Foundations, Spire's, Hagerty, I-Ready, and Mega Words, and then supplementing those programs with decodable text, Activities from Literacy How in the Florida Center for Research, Orthographic Mapping Strategies, Lexia Core 5, and David Kilpatrick's Phonemic Students who are in the Tier 2 or Tier 3 groups meet a number of times per week to address the gaps in their learning. As an instructional support team, we meet to analyze that student's benchmark data, classroom assessments, and feedback from their teacher to determine goals to work towards gaining mastery. We track their growth and progress through growth monitoring assessments like I-Ready and other forms of progress monitoring through additional assessments such as DIBELS, the Running Record, or the Foundation Assessments which teachers are using inside the classrooms. This information allows us to get a deeper understanding of how a child is progressing. The I-Ready allows the teacher to get a snapshot of students' current and potential growth through their growth monitoring feature in between benchmark assessment windows. It allows us to see how students are performing on individualized differentiated lessons that may be assigned by the program or by the teacher based on that student's needs. Other forms such as the DIBELS assessment allow teachers to read with a student to better understand their reading in terms of letter identification and phonemic segmentation in the younger grades, and then nonsense word decoding, high-frequency word fluency, and oral reading fluency and accuracy on grade-level passages, as well as higher-order comprehension. This screener is quick and allows teachers to hear their student read and is easy to follow in determining an instructional focus and progress monitor for that student. Progress monitoring occurs frequently during the course of intervention to determine if the student is responding to the intervention or not. This information then helps the team determine the next best steps for the student to improve their achievement. And with that, I'd like to guide your attention over to Dr. Sweeney.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Just a few more minutes, I promise. It's been a long presentation, all great stuff, I'm sure you would agree. So as we have seen here, reading is a multifaceted and complex learning process. It requires our brains to identify letters and connect them to sounds, put the sounds together in the right way to identify words, put the words together to form a sentence, and then a paragraph, so then students can read and understand. When students don't respond to typical instruction or intervention, it's sometimes because they have an underlying disability that impacts their ability to learn. Reading disabilities are learning disabilities that can include problems with phonological processing, reading fluency or speed, and/or reading comprehension. When students are identified as having a potential learning disability, comprehensive testing is completed to parcel out any and all areas of disability, and then interventions and supports are put into place to assist with both the remediation of those skills and to make sure accommodations are in place to ensure that the students have access to instruction throughout the day. Dyslexia is characterized by deficits in accurate and fluent word recognition. Individuals with dyslexia struggle with word recognition, decoding, spelling, despite having average to above-average intelligence. Reading comprehension is sometimes impaired due to very poor word reading skills. Students with dyslexia often have deficits in phonemic and phonological processing. You've heard those terms throughout this conversation, and those are the very skills that we try to work on in very specific ways in kindergarten. But students with dyslexia have particular difficulties with those things, and those things influence a student's ability to hear, identify, and manipulate the sound structure associated with a spoken word, including its phonemes, syllables, onsets, and rhymes. Individuals with dyslexia may also have impaired orthographic processing, which interferes with connecting the letters and letter combinations with sounds accurately and fluently. With the accurate diagnosing of the processes affected, effective interventions are put in place. I have put this QR up for folks watching or for those in the audience. If you scan that QR code, it'll take you to an interesting article in the Wired magazine talking about dyslexia, some myths and some accuracies. They actually, scientists have created, or the technology gurus have created a simulation where it'll actually show you what reading looks like if you had severe dyslexia. Support for students who struggle with learning disabilities and reading disabilities can be provided to students throughout the continuum of special ed supports at Cottle, through specially-designed instructions in the integrated co-taught setting, through instruction in the skill setting, through pull-out reading supports, and in special class instruction. When students are pulled out for special education reading supports, our teachers provide small-group instruction utilizing research-based interventions. Our teachers have been trained in reading approaches such as PAF, Orton-Gillingham, direct instruction, and Wilson. This year, as you have heard, seven of our teachers have committed to the year-long extensive training required to become Wilson Reading Systems certified. This Orton-Gillingham approach is a direct, explicit, multi-sensory, structured, sequential, diagnostic, and prescriptive way to teach literacy when reading, writing, and spelling does not come easily to students, such as those with dyslexia. Orton-Gillingham is most properly understood and practiced as an approach, not as a method, a program, or a system. In the hands of a well-trained and experienced instructor, it's a powerful tool of exceptional breadth, depth, and flexibility. The Wilson Reading System is under the umbrella of Orton-Gillingham. What is really nice about the Wilson Reading System is that it uses many of the components of the Foundation's instruction and thus offers a continuity for our learners as well. I'm now going to ask Mrs. Jill Cordero, one of our beloved special education teachers from Cottle, who has been teaching our students to learn to read for many years. I'm going to ask her to come and speak about reading instruction for our students with reading disabilities.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sweeney.
I'll do the clicker.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So nice to be here tonight. So as a special education teacher, I have been teaching students with reading disabilities for many years. This year, I am completing extensive training in the Wilson Reading Systems and Orton-Gillingham Approach. The Wilson Reading System, known as WRS, is an intensive Tier 3 program for students in Grades 2 through 12 and adults with word-level deficits who are not making sufficient progress through their current intervention, have been unable to learn with other teaching strategies, and require multi-sensory language instruction, or who require more intensive structured literacy instruction due to a language-based learning disability such as dyslexia. As a structured literacy program based on phonological coding research and Orton-Gillingham principles, WRS directly and systematically teaches the structure of the English language. Through the program, students learn fluent decoding and encoding, spelling skills, to level, to the level of mastery. From the beginning steps of the program, students receive instruction in word structure in depth for automatic decoding and spelling, word recognition and spelling of high-frequency words, including irregular words, vocabulary, word understanding, and word learning skills, sentence-level text reading with ease, expression, and understanding, listening comprehension with age-appropriate narrative and informational text, reading comprehension with narrative and expository text of increasing levels of difficulty, narrative and informational text structures, organization of information for oral or written expression, proofreading skills, self-monitoring for word recognition, accuracy, and comprehension. Special education teachers provide pull-out reading supports which feature research-based, systematic, and multi-sensory structured language curricula to help students succeed. Students learn to read step by step, starting with the basic structure and rules of our language, then building to more advanced lessons over time. I have seen how the programs we have used at Cottle transform students' lives by giving them the tools to read and write, build confidence, and empower them to achieve their dreams. Thank you.
So here is a sample lesson plan of a Wilson, or, you know, it's very similar with a research-based, strong literacy curriculum. It's very structured in terms of it goes through in a very explicit way, the teaching of the various skills, as Mrs. Cordero had explained. So I'm now going to ask Mrs. Elise Kosky, another beloved special education teacher at Cottle, who has been providing reading and literacy instruction to students in our special class. These are students who typically have not responded to any other research-based interventions in the past. In fact, some students enter Cottle who are non-verbal and don't even recognize the letters in their name. And I have seen Ms. Kosky and other special educators in our building do wonders. And for these students, the district has invested in a strong research-based curricula called Direct Instruction: Reading Mastery. I'd ask Ms. Kosky to come up and share a little bit about that.
Oh, how do I go back? There we go. Hi, thank you for having me. So Reading Mastery is an evidence-based reading program that uses the direct instruction method to help students master essential decoding and comprehension skills. Direct instruction is a model for teaching that utilizes explicit and systematic teaching procedures. It emphasizes well-developed and carefully-planned lessons designed around small learning increments and clearly-defined prescribed teaching tasks. It is based on the theory that clear instruction, eliminating misinterpretations, can greatly improve and accelerate learning. The program places particular emphasis on teaching thinking skills and helping students acquire background knowledge. It incorporates techniques for teaching both comprehension and decoding and integrating them into successful reading. A typical 30- to 45-minute lesson includes seven to nine short activities encompassing multiple strands of content, including phonemic awareness, letter-sound correspondence, sounding out words, word recognition, vocabulary, oral reading fluency, and comprehension. Also, there are three strands within the Reading Mastery Program: reading, language, and literature. The four main features of DI that ensure students can learn are: students are placed in instruction at their skill level. The program's structure is designed to ensure mastery of the content. Instruction is modified to accommodate each student's rate of learning, and programs are field-tested and revised before publication. As a teacher, I have seen the positive effects of the Reading Mastery Program on students' ability to identify letter sounds, blend letter sounds into words, read fluently, and comprehend what they are reading. In particular, I currently teach a student who came to my class last year in April. At the time this student came to me, he was able to identify 13 letter sounds and was unable to independently blend sounds into words. The student is now able to identify 24 letter sounds. He is blending these sounds into four-to-five letter words and is reading at a rate of 37 words per minute. In addition, on the full I-Ready diagnostic assessment, he received a score of 259 in reading. After four months, he received a score of 402, which is 325% progress towards his annual typical growth. His results show me that he is able to generalize the skills and concepts that he has learned in reading, in reading mastery, and other aspects of his learning.
Thank you. And now Mr. Keough to do a nice sum-up.
Do you have?
Clicker. Why is the clicker?
All right. So, reading researcher Marion Wolf says that the brain was never meant to read. It's always stuck with me because there's so many things that we learn to do naturally: walk, talk. But the act of teaching reading is really training the brain to create new neural pathways. At Tuckahoe, we meet that challenge by working with neuroscience and systems design, ultimately to engineer a comprehensive program where students learn to read, read to learn, and have fun along the way. Our speakers tonight have done a remarkable job of bringing this system to life. This is a cohesive effort. Much like Scarborough's rope, this is about pulling together the many different strands of the reading brain and the quality teaching and learning that you saw and done on display tonight. You'll see that this rope in the corner of the screen has followed us through the whole presentation. Additionally, it's important to recognize that what we presented here tonight is foundational. You should know that this work is further threaded into our secondary classrooms where students continue to cultivate their love of learning and hone their skills as critical readers, thinkers, and leaders. To assemble this comprehensive system, we enlist the different programs that you heard about tonight. This requires the scheduling and implementation of professional learning experiences and opportunities to evaluate our programs. Professional learning, as we described, has been very much based in research and evidence, and we thank the board for their support of these trainings. This includes programs based on Orton-Gillingham approaches such as Foundations and Wilson, and close work with consultants in the area of literacy, co-teaching, and direct instruction. Special thank you to Mr. Marash and Mr. Kilgallen, who are already busy scheduling substitutes in the midst of a global pandemic but always worked with me to schedule these critical trainings and give teachers the opportunity to attend. Also, a special thank you to Dr. Sweeney for her partnership in coordinating excellent trainers. We recently launched data teams at Cottle, allowing us to further dive into the benchmark assessment data as well as other quantitative and qualitative data sources. This provides us with the opportunity to reflect and evaluate on our instructional strategies and our use of resources. As building a district leadership, we regularly hold meetings to identify trends and priorities. We receive training in MTSS and reading interventions, and we offer our faculty training in literacy-focused issues such as through BOSIs, WinWord, and the Wilson Reading System. We are open to feedback and partnership. We presented on elements of this program to parents in principal coffees, and we welcome opportunities to discuss these approaches further. Scarborough's Reading Rope speaks to the cohesion of skills required for reading mastery. I hope this evening's presentation and my brief overview provide a glimpse of the threads critical to our continuous improvement, interwoven into our larger planning and decision-making. So as I wrap up, a very special thank you to all of our co-stars in tonight's presentation, especially Madeline and Gianna, our teachers and administrators.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was a phenomenal presentation. Really, really good, really well thought out, and a lot of work went into that, it's obvious. Thank you very much. Really, really good. Really well done.
I think that I do want to say also, thank you so much for allowing us an opportunity to take a peek into your classrooms, to see what it is that you're doing and how you're going about building and developing our young learners in reading and writing. I personally love it because I'm so a geek that way, it's just me, but I'm hoping that for people who may not understand and do not, you know, mingle in and out of a classroom, I hope they have a better understanding about the work that you do. And the piece that I absolutely love was bringing our young students in, our little Madeline and our little Gianna, Gianna in, to help demonstrate how the students respond and what they give back. And so I just commend you for your work, and I just want to lift you up and encourage you to keep working so hard. We love you, we appreciate you as a board, and everything we do is about bettering our students so they can go out in this world and shine bright. And so thank you for all that you do.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I do. I hope I entertain my comments and questions because I have both. First, I just want to echo Lori's statement. I mean, I think we say this a lot sitting in the board, that this is one of the best presentations, but for me, as a parent of someone who has struggled, and as a board member, I can't tell you the gift that all of the staff and our new superintendent is given to those, not just those that have children maybe that might be struggling or they think they might be struggling, but to really all students. This Orton-Gillingham, and I thought, Dr. Sweeney, if parents can even just listen back to your description and explanation, because it took me a very long time as a parent to sort of grasp what that is, and I think to unpack it in one night, you can't. But I think, I actually might even go back and listen because what we're doing in this district is we're going from this sort of, and this is not just Tuckahoe, this is all the districts, and being a parent member and going into different meetings around the, you know, the county, I can tell you that most of the schools, it's sort of like a wait, evaluate, wait, then intervene, then you pull out, then you, then you, then you, then you, and the kid's in 5th grade, right? And so, and there's always this catch-up mentality that intervention is not to their, nothing to do with their, you know, personal, it's more just the system of wait, wait, wait. So I think what we're doing in this district is shifting from, no, 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 we're going to start right out of the gate, you're in kindergarten, we're going to hit the ground running, and what you're going to see is these kids now, they're And being a parent member and going into different meetings around the, you know, the county, I can tell you that most of the schools, it's sort of like a wait, evaluate, wait, then intervene, then you pull out, then you, then you, then you, then you, and the kid's in fifth grade, right? And so, and there's always this catch-up mentality that, that intervention is not to their, nothing to do with their, you know, um, personal. It's more just the system of wait, wait, wait. So I think what we're doing in this district is shifting from, no, 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 we're going to start right out of the gate. You're in kindergarten, we're going to hit the ground running. And what you're going to see is these kids now, they're going to have this opportunity to not sit in third grade and go, wait a minute, what's going on here, right? Um, I think it's just, I want to like cry. It's like, it's such an amazing, thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Sweeney and Dr. Goodman and all the staff and the principals and everybody on board and the teachers because eyewitness pull out, you put back in, right? So whatever was going on out was not going on back in, and so there was a disconnect. So I'm just so, so happy. Thank you so much to all the teachers, and those presentations were great to watch them do that. I do have a question and I hope you'll, so when we talk about tier one and tier two, and again, a lot of information unpacked, but when you were talking about the different, I don't know who's going to answer, maybe Mr. Keough, but when you talk about the different interventions, um, who, who does that? Who, like, for example, like, Debbles, Dibbles, Dibbles and running back, because I know the teachers do that, but I'm just curious and just from my own thought process, who is, who is it that's finding that information and then bringing it into a committee, so to speak, like who's doing the evaluation on that level? Yes, it, yes, it.
Yeah, so it depends on the, um, you know, where the student falls. It could be the classroom teacher, it could be our interventionist, so, um, you know.
Depends, okay.
Multiple people are trained.
Yeah, and, and the reason I ask that is, and again, just, this is my, my, going back and thinking, the, the process. My, what I, I saw happen or see sometimes happen maybe is that it's, it's only as good as the person's doing the evaluation. So when you bring in systems like I-Ready or you bring in other names that I'm not familiar with, then I think the other thing is that it's great that you're coming in at different angles because I think if you're just using one system to look at something, you know, you need to, everything to correlate and then it makes sense, right? So I think that's, that's excellent. So I, I used to go on these, you know, trying to be a teacher, but I, I am not and I realized that very quickly, so I have, but I would, and they would talk about, you know, you, you need to have at least three systems in a school. That was one of the recommendations I had heard and one of the, you know, many things that I was like sitting and listening to. So that, that made me think of this neuroscientist I listened to say that you can't, it's not one size fits all, right? So you're coming with all these, but it's the person doing the evaluation too. So I was, I, I don't think I, the interventionist I, I've never seen, so thank you for coming out.
She's, she's new this year.
Yeah, so that's her, is that, is that the job of kind of bringing in another, another set of eyes, so to speak, right?
And because again, it's a team based in IST, it's an instructional support team. So there's a lot of different voices at the table, similar to like a, a team of like doctors, of different specialists talking about it from different angles.
I saw this, I see, you know, because sometimes you can go into the classroom and observe, but, you know, you, you know, you go, when you get a little piece of information, but it's great that you, that we're just hitting it with a lot of different pieces. Yeah.
So going back to the instructional support team, uh, we, it's, that's exactly it. We come together as an instructional support team. That includes school psychologists, speech therapists, classroom teachers, interventionists, uh, myself, Mr. Keough has sat in. Everyone sits down and looks at not just one data point, it's not just I-Ready. It's multiple data points that you look at to get the best picture of the child and what the child needs in order to close the gap and build that foundational skill that might be lacking.
And then you're also doing, you're adjunct, you're giving that adjunct to I-Ready. What was the other one you mentioned? Because I've used that one, to Lexia? There's another really good one, I've used that one. I just found it from another district and I've started to use that. So all these things just more is, is obviously when there's downtime and you can put that intervention there or bring it home, you know?
Yeah, that, that's at the tier two, like when, when you're at the tier one and you get to IST, you're looking at, uh, Lexia might be at that point, but you have Dibbles, you have Foundations assessments.
What's an intervention point?
Absolutely, it is an intervention point, absolutely. And then you have Foundations assessments, you do have I-Ready, so multiple data points.
And what's great about having all of those systems and that the district's investing in that is it allows us to triangulate to see that things are, are, you know, inter-reliability. But then also because that reading rope has so many different pieces to it, some services hit those different threads better than the other services. So we have almost a menu of things to choose from based on the needs of the individual child.
I'm happy with having all that, what you're, what you're doing, especially as students need more intervention. You're continuing doing more and more progress monitoring to make sure that you're on the right track so that you can change things, so make sure the student is continuing to make progress, which is what we're seeing with at Cottle really. You guys are doing an excellent job.
That's great.
I'm going to be really, this is going to be really wonderful to see um, when these groups of students, as they move up and sort of look back sort of longitudinally and to, and compare to see how over time these students did over the students who did not have these interventions and these sort of team sort of worked together. So, um, I can't wait to see what that looks like.
It's going to impact the middle school, I assume, as well.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think it's important to, to also bring that into the middle school and high school. You know, some children might need that, right, throughout K through 12, so to have that, you know, in, in the middle school as well, and high school.
Rollout that we found, you know, to roll out something this system-wide during, you know, distance learning, during the, you know, opening and closings of schools, um, a lot of people might put that on pause. And we actually saw the value in having it even more so because of what we were seeing.
And, and you're going to see a lot more of it, and these masks come off, it's going to be, I think there's going to be lots of gaps and things that, we talk about multisensory, well, looking at, at a mouth is one of them, right? And, and, you know, you can tell people, they look, they can't see your, you know, lips moving, it's even harder. So I, I think that's going to be a great thing that they come off. But, um, just my one other thing I just wanted to ask about, which was, uh, what was it? Sorry, I lost my train of thought, the data, the benchmark, the benchmark data. When you say that, what does that mean?
That's I-Ready. So that's the universal screener that we administer every day.
That's what you're going to be looking at as far as?
We do, and we look at that grade level-wise, we look at that in small inquiry groups. And, um, the screener really serves as an opportunity for us to get a temperature check. You know, it, it might lead to larger conversations in IST. Uh, it might confirm or make us question some of the other data that we're having, it's that triangulation piece. So that's what those data teams kind of surround themselves with is the, the benchmark data, even though it's not the only data that we use because that would be ill-advised.
And, and it takes, takes time, one of the things that, and you probably know more than me about this, about teaching and how long it takes. But I remember going to, so Jersey had passed a law that you had to have something in the, in the curriculum for children were, that were dyslexic, which, you know, New York is not there yet. But because of that, I would go over there and teachers had to go on training. And I remember being at one where the teacher said it takes an average of two to three years. And that was IMSA, it's a difference in Orton-Gillingham, again, underneath that banner. But, you know, one of the teachers was saying it takes a good two to three years to even just sort of feel comfortable with it. So this is, you know, people feel like, okay, let's go, now everybody's going to, you know, grenade reading. And so that appreciation of this is a long-term, we're in it for the long game, you know? And, you know, I'll even talk to parents in neighboring districts, I think they're not doing this. And, and we're just, it's in this baby, it's an infancy stage. And Dr. Goodman, because you've had the special ed background, you were able to envision, you know, this. But this is going to be just years in the making, but it will if teachers that are, um, you know, we have seven and all the teachers here tonight, I commend you because this is not, this is not go-to-a-weekend course. This is like, I'm, I'm going to own this and this is going to be, and some of the Orton-Gillingham things I went, they said it takes 10 years. I mean, I don't want to, but I'm just saying like to become a really mastery at identifying, really getting in there and getting that kid early on to, to, you know, prevent that, that gap. So I commend all of the fact, because this is, this is hard. I mean, I thought I was just going to go in and take some classes and help my daughter. I was like, oh, no, wait a minute, I got, I, there's no. So it's, it's, it takes a special person with this, you know, and not everybody's going to do it. But if I'm in working with someone who knows it, I know how to tap into them, right? So they work off each other, which I think is, was lacking, and it's, is wonderful that we're doing that.
That's a good segue into the question I was going to have, which is, this is obviously amazing and, and a huge improvement. So how do we build on it? What do we go from here? And I would imagine it's professional development, I would imagine, just getting more and more of our staff trained up on, on this and getting them, um, up to speed. It's a long, long haul. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Yeah, and that usually comes from like our conversations around the data, around students' needs. These are skills that we want to, you know, develop capacity around. These are questions that we have as professionals, why are we seeing this and not this? So yeah, I mean, professional learning is a, is a constant cycle, so that, that'll always be something that will, you know.
And it's not for everybody, but when you find the ones that want to do it and you develop that and have them there, it's a long haul, right?
Yeah, I wanted to say that too, like over the last two years, I've, I've seen teachers having to learn how to use Zoom and how to do all these things to keep up with the demands of, of teaching during the pandemic. They still threw themselves at all these new teaching strategies with gusto. And I think that's, you know, that's, again, the, the program is successful really because of that part there and the passion to teach these kids to read in a system, systematic, multisensory way.
And, um, the teachers are really incredible. I mean, I really think that tonight.
Oh, sorry, tonight, I mean, each one of you were amazing tonight, amazing.
What, what really happens at Cottle and what happens in our, our high school presentation was so great too, throughout our district middle school also. Teachers are completely committed. COVID-19 and this pandemic did not stop us, it actually fueled us. And I also want to thank, um, the administration, just the building administration, the district administration, you know, all the focus all together, like, Tuckahoe, we're in this together, right? So thank you all.
It's been great, yes, you know, that's wonderful, yep.
It really was, it really, again, just to echo that, teachers have done an amazing job. You know, we saw a kindergarten presentation, fifth grade, Mr. Kay articulated a nice transition during that third grade with Foundations and now the studies, but all of the teachers at Cottle, the pandemic did not slow them down. They kept going, we rolled out Foundations, we said that before, so tremendous thanks go to those Cottle teachers and all the teachers.
It's wonderful, and we're happy to raise our hands for all that funding because that's, that, this is what we raise our hands for. You know, we raise our hands, say, okay, we'll pay for you, pay for you on behalf of the district. And now you see it come, you know, come to life and it's, and see the impact of it.
It's a long, long overdue.
This is part of the budget process, so everything that you're seeing, you will be, you know, and that's why people need to watch these, not just our budget presentation, this is all included in our budget.
A hundred percent, this is showing the community, those that are watching, what, what, what this, these investments are putting forth. And, uh, this is my, my fifth year on the board, and this has been my most rewarding year because I'm really starting to see all the things we talked about for years starting to come to fruition now. You, you've been here the longest as administrators, you're, you're seeing this transition firsthand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's great, so.
Thank you all for your unwavering support of everything at Cottle.
All rose, go back to it.
All good first drinks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment and I'll be brief, that again, to echo what everybody said, but also to really, um, thank the teachers in this room because what you guys do every day is what really matters. And as a parent also of a child who has learning issues, I can say that, like, Ms. Keough is a game changer and so is Ms. Coracey. I don't know everybody else as well. And I can say for sure that, um, Ms. Coracey can attest to the fact that I should not be a teacher either. I did, I did a science lesson in fifth grade for math. She's probably still scarred. And I really just appreciate everything you do so much. And we know that it wouldn't be what it is without all of you and what you do day to day. And I also just want to thank Dr. Goodman for having the vision and putting together such an awesome team.
Yeah, that's right, it's the team for sure.
It does actually start at the head. I feel like Laura, our work here is done. It's been a long road.
Drop the mic, we're done.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Let me get some rest.
Good night, yes.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
No one has to, I can all run away.
We do have a little bit of business, guys, not, not much, but a little bit, so. Excellent, excellent presentation. Not all Dr. Goodman's presentations are like, one's better than the next.
I know.
Uh, okay, we've got a little bit of business, let's just burn through it so we can get out of here. Um, approve a donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to Tuckahoe Athletic Scholarship in memory of Oggy Nardone at Tuckahoe High School. And whereas the district would like to accept such donation, resolve the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District, accept the donation from the Eastchester Eagle Sports Club in the amount of $500. Do we have a motion? Lori, second, Teres, any discussion? This is very generous, thank you very much. All in favor? Great, thank you, this is, this is great. I have another donation, approve another donation. Uh, whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the Tuckahoe Athletic Scholarship in memory of Donald Wendy DiIzzo, is that right? At Tuckahoe High School. And whereas the district would like to accept such donation, resolve the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby accepts the donation from Carmella and Donald DiIzzo Jr. in the amount of $500. Hope I'm saying that right, I don't know if I am. Well, uh, any motion? Lori, second, Teres, all in favor? Great, thank you very much, that's awesome, appreciate it. And appreciate a facility, uh, I'm sorry, approve a facilities license agreement. Resolve the Board of Education approves a facilities license agreement with American Sports Group LLC to provide exclusive use of House of Sports facility for basketball activities effective February 24, 2022 through February 25, 2022, at the amount not to exceed $800. Any motion? Lori, second, Teres, any discussion? All in favor? Prove a tax surcharge. Resolve that in the matter, a surcharge proceeding instituted by Compass One LLC affecting premises located at 70 Marvendale Road, town of Eastchester, and designated as Section 35 Block 2 Lot 1-E. Tuckahoe Board of Education hereby approves the refund of school taxes in the amount of $13,462.52. And whereas pursuant to a resolution of the board under Section 3651-1-A of the education law, Tuckahoe Union Free School District here, uh, establishes a reserve fund known as a tax surcharge reserve fund to be used for the purpose of paying judgments and claims from the tax surcharge proceedings in accordance with Article 7 of the Real Property Tax Law. And whereas the district is liable for tax surcharge proceedings in the amount of $13,462.52, it is hereby resolved, that Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby authorizes the increase of a 1964.400 refund in real property tax by $9,848.1 and the decrease of a 864 tax surcharge reserve by $9,848.1 to be used in accordance with applicable laws for the purpose of paying legal fees, expenses, and tax surcharge judgments. Do we have a motion? Lori, second, Laura, any discussion? All in favor? All right. And the tax surcharge. Resolve that in the matter, of the surcharge proceedings instituted by Compass One LLC affecting property located at 70 Marvendale Road, town of Eastchester, designated as Section 35 Block 2 Lots 1-E and 1-T. Tuckahoe Board of Education hereby approves the proposed settlement as recommended by the town of Eastchester, which was, which will result in an estimate, estimated tax refund of $13,462.52. Do we have a motion? All in a second, Lori, all in favor? All right. Prove a side letter agreement. Resolve the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter agreement dated February 18, 2022, by and between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association, as attached to the official minutes of this meeting and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do we have a motion? Lori, second, Teres, any discussion on that?
This is a modified lacrosse, is this, so we're doing the boys?
We're doing the boys' modified lacrosse.
Yeah, that's new.
So do we have JV girls, modified, and JV?
We have girls JV lacrosse as well. We have girls JV lacrosse.
Is there modified?
No. Which is building up.
I don't think we have, I don't think we've enough, we looked right, yeah, there's enough numbers.
We tried to, we've just built, we just made it by building the boys, right?
They just, yeah, it's a numbers, but I think the more, more people hear about it, right, they'll try, yeah, that's great.
Everybody will practice here?
We are, we, did we do that yet for the, um?
Not yet, we're still working out the details for the agreement.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, that's right, okay.
Is anybody using that building? Those buildings are vacant.
No, it's, Iona's coming up, they're redoing the fields supposedly.
Yeah.
But are they using the buildings or no?
Yeah, for nursing, I heard.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
That's, that's, thank you, because that's, we've been talking about modified boys. We're talking about lacrosse, and we got the girls, that, that took years.
And now we got the boys.
Yeah, all right.
I believe we're going to get the fields.
That'll be terrific.
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay, approve treasurer's report, revenue report, appropriation report. Resolve the Board of Education approves the treasurer's report, revenue report, appropriation report, and budget transfer report for the period ending December 31, 2021. Any motion? Lori, second, Teres, all in favor? Approve treasurer's report, revenue report, appropriation report. February, uh, yeah, resolve that the Board of Education approves the treasurer's report, revenue report, appropriation report, and budget transfer report for the period ending January 31, 2022. Any motion? Teres, second, Laura, all in favor? Okay. Prove extra classroom activity reports. Resolve the Board of Education approves the extra classroom activity reports for the middle school and high school for the period ending December 31, 2021. Any motion? Lori, second, Laura, all in favor? Okay, and also, once again, resolve that the Board of Education approves extra, extra classroom activity reports for the middle school and high school for the period ending January 31, 2022. Any motion? Lori, second, Laura, all in favor? Okay. And then we have our personnel recommendations. Let's, we have to, we're going to take these as a group and then we're going to acknowledge some new teacher hires. Resolve the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves Personnel Action Items A through H as outlined below. Do we have a motion? Teres, second. Teraz, second. Laura, all in favor? All right, great, so we do have three new teacher appointees, you want to mention that?
Yes, yes, so maybe, are Mr. Marash still here?
Yeah.
And, oh, so, oh, you go first, I'm sorry. Dr. Lenahan, too, they could talk about the new teachers that we just hired.
We have three teachers.
And they're here. All three of them are here. You want to stand up?
Yeah. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Yeah, the middle school, high school, replacing Dr. Mozer in technology, Louis Cooper, a graduate of University of Buffalo. Basically, he's a technology, he is a technology teacher at Hastings since 2016. His references from the Hastings School Districts were exemplary. Mr. Keogh worked with him at Hastings, so he came highly recommended from a reliable source here, Mr. Keogh. Basically, he did a wonderful demonstration lesson, interviewed with five teachers and two administrators. You know, technology knows through and through, coding, project-based learning, very authentic, you know, what really put him, first of all, he's an elite candidate, no matter what, but, you know, authentic learning, and he's done project-based learning, and he's done project design. He's walked in the real world, creating products, you know, developing projects, products from an engineering perspective. So I think he's going to be a big addition. It's not just academic, it's authentic, it's real life, and you can take a look at his products online. So, welcome, Mr. Cooper, congratulations. Looking forward to working with you.
Welcome. All right, good evening again, everybody. As you know, we have a number of our veteran faculty members at Cottle who will be retiring at the end of this school year. We will certainly miss those members of our Cottle family that will be moving on to their next chapter. As we begin to plan for the upcoming school year, we have been conducting an extensive search. By that, I mean, I think we've had over 400 applications for the four open positions that we have, and the two candidates being appointed tonight went through three rigorous rounds, including a demo lesson at Cottle. And I am pleased to introduce to you two very fine educators who will be joining us as part of the Cottle family next school year. First, we welcome Ms. Claire Connolly, who will be one of our new kindergarten teachers. Ms. Connolly has a master's degree in education from Lehman College and a New York State Professional Certification in childhood education, as well as New York State Initial Certification in Special Education and Literacy. Ms. Connolly also has had additional training in several programs already in use at Cottle, including Foundations, iReady, and Envision's Math. She has seven years' experience teaching in both Westchester and New York City school